Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The Diamond Bar ASO G-10 All-Stars. Welcome. I would like to call the July 16, 2024 City Council meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Go-to webinar transcripts of the council meeting are available upon request after the council meeting. And for real-time transcription, visit your Apple App or Google Play Store and download services such as Live Transcribe or Live Caption. The public is encouraged to join the meeting online or by phone at the numbers printed on the agenda, which can be found on the city's website at www.diamondbarca.gov or in-person here in the main auditorium in the South Coast Air Quality Management District. We have also allowed public comments to be submitted in advance to the city clerk. If any were received, they will be noted for the record, and when we get to the public comment period, this meeting is being recorded, and by participating, you are given your permission to be televised. This meeting will be rebroadcast every Saturday and Sunday at 9:00 AM and alternate Tuesdays at 8:00 PM and archived for viewing on the city's website at www.diamondbarca.gov. And we will now proceed to the Pledge of Legions and then the roll call. Please stand for the Pledge of Legions led by Councilmember Chow.
May I hand over your heart, ready to get?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Who do we honor, who does that, one nation under God, equal and just as well?
Thank you so much. Please be seated. City Clerk Santana, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
I'm here.
Councilmember Lo?
I'm here.
Councilmember Tai is absent. Mayor Pro Tem Ting?
Here.
Mayor Lu?
Here. Thank you. City Manager Fox, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. The agenda is hereby approved. And today, we have a very, very special presentation and certificate of recognition for our Diamond Bar ASO G-10 All-Star team. So, if we can ask our colleagues out and the All-Star team and the coaches to the arena here. Hello. Welcome. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the Diamond Bar ASO's G-10 All-Star team. You know what they did? So, the All-Star team had a super memorable season, culminating in your impressive win of the Strawberry Cup Tournament held on May 19 in Camarillo. Isn't that awesome? Ladies and gentlemen, let's give a huge round of applause. So, you know when I was 10 years old, and many of you are younger 10 years old, I can hardly kick the ball, and you're champions. I gotta ask, what does it take and what kind of mental preparation and physical preparation and training do you get into going to this year and winning the championship? Who can share that? Mia? Okay, so you know when I was your age or younger, I can hardly kick the ball like this, straight on. But now you're champion. I gotta ask, and what is it that it takes to be a champion? The preparation, the mental, and all the practice. Are you done?
Teamwork.
Teamwork? That's amazing. What else?
Come on, Bella.
Yeah.
Come on, Bella.
Okay. Sky. You know, you can shout it from there. Yeah, teamwork and what other kinds of work? Practice? Teamwork and?
Practice?
Practice. And that's a lot of hard work, right? Teamwork and hard work. Awesome. Congratulations. So, on behalf of our city, City of Diamond Bar, I'd like to congratulate you, and we take great pride in the pleasure in recognizing your incredible achievement and offer our best wishes for a bright and successful future, both on and off the field. Congratulations. All right. So, we have certificate for our amazing team. Okay. And we have Mia Lin. Megan Hua. All right, Megan. Leila Jimenez. Leila. All right, Leila. And we have Alia Mendez. Olivia Alonso. Ellie Hughes. Ooh, Ellie. Sky Eradi. Sky. Isabella Hemsted. This is Savannah Awagui. All right, Savannah. All right. Katari Isar. All right. And of course, our coach, Wes Evans. Huge round of applause. All right. Coach, you have a couple of words to share with us? That's it.
First, I want to thank the City of Diamond Bar for your continued support, not just for our soccer program, but all the youth sports that are in Diamond Bar. You guys continue to give us the field space you need, the preparation. So, thank you, everybody. Thank you for all the parents from our team. The support is why we are successful. Okay, and thankfully, and thank you lastly to the girls. Hard work pays off, okay? Thank you.
Great job, team. Great job, parents, and our awesome staff. Thank you, thank you so much. Parents, like to take us some photos, don't you? All right. Right there, good? All right, let's give it up one more time for our Diamond Bar ASO G-10 All-Stars. Thank you, coach. Thank you, parents. All right, thank you so much. And we'll move on to city manager reports and recommendations. City Manager Fox, are there any reports?
Mayor, no additional reports this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. And next, we have public comments period. The public comments is the time reserved for, on each regular meeting agenda, to provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the city council on consent calendar items or other matters of interest, not on the agenda, that are within subject jurisdiction of the council. Although the city council values your opinion, comment, pursuant to the Brown Act, members of the city council or staff may briefly respond to public comments if necessary, but no extended discussion and no action on such matters may take place. There is a five-minute maximum time limit when addressing the city council. At this time, I will call out speakers who have submitted speaker cards first, then the city clerk Santana will ask for those callers joining on the teleconference, who may wish to speak on their public comments. And the first comment, speaker card I have is from Ms. Cynthia Yu of the Diamond Bar Library. Ms. Cynthia Yu, for yours.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, city staff, and members of audience. My name is Cynthia Yu from the Diamond Bar Library. Looking for a new hobby? Try your hand at designing your own fused glass sun catcher on Monday, July 22. You're joining artist Anna Parkinson from Fireworks Studio and learn about the science, art, and history of fusing glass, then make a glass fuse treasure. We'll offer two sessions of this program, 2:30 PM for adults and 4:00 PM for teens. Parents, join us to have fun with your toddlers as they explore their sense of touch using a sensory cube on Friday, July 26 at 10:15 AM. Toddlers will explore different textures and create their own sensory cube to explore at home. This program is for ages 2 to 4 with a parent or caregiver. Learn about the amazing life of the sea star and how it survived in the ocean on Saturday, July 27 at 2:00 PM. Experience marine life up close with the blue submarines life type pool animals, including sea stars, urchins, sea slugs, and more. This program is for ages 3 and up with a parent or caregiver. Help us celebrate our One County, One Book on Saturday, July 27. The 2024 selection for One Book, One County is L.A. Weather by Maria Embarra Escandón. Diamond Bar Friends of the Library's Four Seasons Book Club will host a book discussion on L.A. Weather at 11:00 AM in the Windmill Room. The county-wide celebration will be held at the Gloria Marina Grand Park at 5:00 PM, featuring great music performance, resources, fun activities, and a special author talk with Maria Embarra Escandón. Free parking is available at the Music Center Parking Garage. A free shuttle is available from A Libraries. Please visit our library website, lacountylibrary.org for more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cynthia Yu of the Diamond Bar Library. Next, I have a speaker card from Mulim regarding road construction.
Hello. Okay, my name is Mulim. I wrote in down in advance because I am afraid I will be nervous. I am the owner of Nellie's Exercise Equipment Store located at 21210 Golden Springs Drive in Diamond Bar. I'm selling exercise equipment in the same location for over 25 years. Over the, you know, past 25 years, I have seen many cases of roadblocks while repairing the Golden Springs Drive, but this time is different from before. I heard in March at City Hall that the Golden Springs Drive would be blocked until September due to construction for 57 freeway that started in December of last year. It's a period of over 10 months. Because of this, I lost many customers and the business started to slow down, inserting in a lot of losses. However, when I asked about this city hall, the person in charge said that this construction had nothing to do with Diamond Bar City, and he gave me a piece of paper and a phone number. If this construction has nothing to do with the city of Diamond Bar, who gave the permission to block the road? Can anyone illegally block the road and do construction work in our city without permission from our city? If an individual like me lost his money in business, who should I fight or claim with? I ask the city. How can the city help us in this case? I appear from the bottom of my heart for help. Thank you for listening to me until the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lim. Do we have any follow-up comments? If you'd like to speak, we can do speaker card. We can have a speak. Can we fill out a speaker card?
We fill out one for both, but actually, we are in the same location, same case, more than four tenants in that shopping center, and all of the victims in that construction.
Okay. If you can come out the podium and say your name, please.
My name, Riyad Ladadwa. I'm the owner of Diamond Fish Market. I'm next door with Mr. Mo. We are five tenants in the same location, restaurant, and his store, and the liquor store, actually, they closed down because of these things too. And my store and another restaurant all were affected from this construction. It's been since last year, and the business is getting affected. I have proved of that. Last year, they blocked the whole shopping center. No one can get in or out. In two months, I lost big loss, over $100,000 each month, down the business in one month, each month, and that's affected my business. This is me only. So, I don't know what they can help, what they can do with us. Until now, now it's a little better because they moved to the other side a little bit, but it's still, we got affected from the last year. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Sorry about that. Maybe if we could take that information and see how we can help?
Certainly, we'll take the information and look into it. As you know, the project, the 5760 Confluence Project is being managed by the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments. The city is not a sponsor of that project.
Okay. Thank you. We can talk to our staff and get information, see how we can help. Thank you. And next, our speaker card from Ni Khan, and we got from the Together Against Crime Foundation.
Hi, the Honorable Mr. Mayor and the distinguished members of the city council. My name is Ni Khan. I'm the current president of TACF, Together Against Crime Foundation. We are hosting an event this Sunday afternoon from 2:00 to 4:00 PM at the AQMD Auditorium. We have invited Mr. Nathan Hachman and our current DA, Mr. George Cascon, to come and talk to their constituents, their plans and vision, how to solve our city problem and the crime situation in our community. So, I'm extending this invitation to everybody here to come and join us. I think this is a valuable opportunity for the residents to listen to the proposal so that we can be an informed citizen to vote in November to revise our city and community. So, it's right here at 2:00 PM, this Sunday afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. And that's all the speaker cards I have. If anyone in-person audience would like to speak, please submit a speaker card. And City Clerk Santana, were there any emails received?
There were no emails received for public comment, and there are no residents on the line at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Santana. So, once again, if anyone would like to speak, please submit the speaker card, and seeing none, we will now close, close public comment. And I will move on to the schedule of future events and consent calendar. City Manager Fox, can you please announce the schedule of upcoming events and then proceed to the consent calendar?
Thank you, mayor and council. Our summer concert Movies in the Park series will continue every Wednesday through July 31 at Summit Ridge Park. The band tomorrow evening will be starting at 6:30 PM, and will be Dreamboats featuring 50's hits, followed by the movie Wish at 8:00 PM. Be sure to visit the city's website for the complete schedule. There will be free catalytic converter etching Wednesday morning, July 17, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM at Calvary Chapel on Golden Springs. The Planet Commission will be meeting on Tuesday, July 23, starting at 6:30 PM in the Windmill Community Room at City Hall. And the Parks and Recreation Commission will be meeting on Thursday, July 25, also at 6:30 PM in the Windmill Community Room at City Hall. Coffee with the Cop will be held on Saturday, July 27, from 8:00 to 10:00 AM at the Starbucks in the H Mart Center on South Diamond Bar Boulevard. And our next city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 6, starting at 6:30 PM here in the AQMD Auditorium. On the consent calendar this evening, we have the approval of the June 18 city council regular meeting minutes, ratification of the check register dated June 12 through July 9, approval of the treasurer's statement for June, second reading by title only, which I will read, and adoption of ordinance 032024, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Diamond Bar, California, amending various provisions of Title 22 Development Code of the Diamond Bar City Code to implement housing programs contained in the city certified 2021 to 2029 housing element to conform to changes in new state housing laws and city policies and to make typographical corrections and clarifications. Adoption of a consultant services agreement with zero footprint for SB 1383 Recovered Organics Waste Product Procurement through June of 2026. An approval of the Second Amendment with the agreement with Absolute International Security for security guard services through June 2025. Approval of an agreement with Tennis Anyone for contract tennis and youth pickleball instruction through June 2027. An adoption of Resolution 24, 2024-28, approving the design and specifications for the Intersection Safety Improvement Project, and approval of a construction agreement with PTM General Engineering Services to construct the improvements, including a determination that the project is categorically exempt Class 1 from the California Environmental Quality Act. And that concludes the consent calendar this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. And would any of my colleagues like to put any items for discussion? Okay.
I do not move for approval.
One second.
Okay. Motion for approval by Councilmember Chow, and second by Councilmember Lo. City Clerk Santana, please call for the vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tai is absent. Mayor Pro Tem Ting?
Yes.
Mayor Lu?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. And we'll now move to item 6.1. City Manager Fox, please provide the report.
Mayor and council, our management analyst, Nick Delgado, will be making the staff presentation.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. The presentation before you is regarding the resolution levying assessments on landscape assessment district number 38 for fiscal year 2024-25. District 38 is the citywide assessment. The assessment fee is $15 per parcel, and in this upcoming fiscal year, there is estimated to be 18,452 assessable parcels in District 38. This district includes landscape maintenance within medians and parkways along arterial roadways. In fiscal year 2024-25, the total revenue is planned to be $585,000, $585,257. So, the total assessment revenue specifically is $276,780, and the rest is offset by the city's general fund contribution of $308,477. The recommendation to the city council is to receive this presentation, open the public hearing to receive testimony, close the public hearing, and adopt Resolution Number 2024-29 to levy and collect assessments for landscape assessment district number 38 for fiscal year 2024-25. And I'm available to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. We'll open for public Okay, so we'll open for public hearings first. Are there any public comments on this item? And seeing none, we will close public hearing. Or any of my colleagues have any question?
Mayor may want to ask if there's anybody online?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Fox. City Clerk Santana, are there anyone online?
There's no one on the line and there was no emails received for this item.
Okay, thank you. We will close public com, uh, hearing, comment. And like any of my council?
Mayor, just a very minor thing under agenda, item six. I'm not sure if my copy is the latest copy, but under public hearing, it actually says none. I think that was, we just need to strike that, but, um, no, that's it, no questions.
I, I do have one question. Under it says revenue and then is, um, the revenue of five hundred and eighty-five thousand is, how, how is the terminology used? Based on that, because there is the assessment and there is the, the transfer from the general fund.
Mr. Mayor, so with regards to the total revenue, we are also anticipating the assessments first and foremost of two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars. And that is the flat rate of the assessment value. Now, there's also the cost of service that District Thirty-Eight has in this upcoming fiscal year. And the cost of service is also going to be five hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars in fiscal year twenty-twenty-four twenty-five. So the, the difference has to be made up by the city's general fund contribution, which would be the three hundred and eight thousand dollar difference.
Okay, thank you. See any other question? One question from Mayor Pro Tem.
So this assessment is a new assessment. What is our old assessment fee? Can you make a comparison, what's the change between the new and the old?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, the, the fifteen dollar assessment citywide has been the same every year for District Thirty-Eight. There is no change year over year.
So this is the same as before?
That is correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. No more questions? And the, the any colleagues like to make a motion on this?
I'll move for approval on six point one.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Chow?
I second.
I'm, I'm sorry, do I need to read the adoption resolution number? No, okay. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Chow and a second by Councilmember Lo. City Clerk Santana, please call for the vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tai is absent, Mayor Pro Tem Tang?
Yes.
Mayor Liu?
Yes, that motion passes, thank you. And we will now move on to item six point two.
Uh, Mayor, on the advice of council, I'm going to recuse myself on this item.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Lo.
Yeah, and for the record, these are smaller districts and Councilmember Lo lives within the district that is going to be addressed at this time. And because it's smaller, the impact of her property is, um, is not sufficiently different than the majority of the parcels. So because of her real estate interest, she has to recuse herself.
Thank you. Thank you, City Attorney. And City, City Manager Fox, please provide the report.
Mayor and Council, our management analyst Nick Delgado will make the presentation again.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This presentation is regarding the resolution levying assessments on Landscape Assessment District Number Thirty-Nine Twenty-Two for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four twenty-five. Assessment District Number Thirty-Nine Twenty-Two is geographically located in East Diamond Bar. It is primarily north of Grand Avenue, adjacent to the Trace Hermos Ranch property. This district includes landscape maintenance within, with five mini parks, trails, slopes and brush areas within the district boundary. There are estimated to be one thousand two hundred and forty-six assessable parcels within this district. In District Thirty-Nine Twenty-Two, the assessment amounts are based off on the benefit to each property. The district is divided into three zones. The assessment for Zone A is, for this coming fiscal year, is five hundred and forty-seven dollars eighty-two cents per parcel. The assessment for Zone B is five hundred and thirty-four dollars and twelve cents per parcel. And the assessment for Zone C is five hundred and six dollars and seventy-three cents per parcel. And the financial summary for this district is as follows. The total revenue, six hundred and ninety-six thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars. The total assessment revenue is six hundred and sixty-five thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars. And the, the city's general fund contribution will be thirty-one thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars. Separately, the capital reserve fund balance is four hundred and forty-seven thousand ninety-seven dollars. The recommendation to the coun, for the council is to receive this presentation, open the public hearing to receive testimony, close the public hearing and adopt Resolution Number twenty-twenty-four thirty to levy and collect assessments for Landscape Assessment District Number Thirty-Nine Twenty-Two for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four twenty-five. And I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much. And now we're open to a public hearing. And are there any, there any public comments in the audience from, on this item? And seeing none, and City Clerk Santana, are there, is anyone online that would like to speak on this?
There are no people on the line and there was no email submitted.
Thank you. And seeing, seeing none, and we will now close a public hearing. And like any of my colleagues have any question or comment on this? Okay, question?
Yeah, okay. Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Just one question, uh, following, um, City Attorney's comment, the assessment will affect the real estate value. And can you elaborate a little bit, how does a, a assessment affect the real estate value?
It is not affecting real estate value, but is a charge on the property, so it will be added to the tax rolls. And the, the difficulty is that under F P P C, Fair Political Practices Commission Regulations, in order for councilmembers not to be considered to have a conflict, at least twenty-five percent of all properties have to be affected the same as your personal property. And because Councilmember Lo was elected at large, the jurisdiction is the whole city. Because this is a smaller area than the whole city, not twenty-five percent of properties are affected. It's only within the small area and that's why it creates a conflict. For the first assessment District Thirty-Eight, that's citywide. And so every, all the properties, including yours, is affected the same. And so it doesn't create a conflict. Because when you're voting on this item, you're voting to assess, put the assessment on your property as well. And that's what's causing it. I suspect once all of the district elections and all the councilmembers elected by districts, then it will be a different analysis because under F P P C regulations, your jurisdiction is based on the district and not citywide. But again, because Councilmember Lo was elected at large, then we have to look at all of the properties versus the properties being affected by this particular assessment. And she lives within the assessment and because it's only, it's only applying that district and not all of the properties, then the exception doesn't apply.
Thank you for your clarification.
I'll move for approval on six point two.
Okay, we have a motion to, for approval from Councilmember Chow.
I'll second.
And a second from Mayor Pro Tem Ten. And City Clerk Santana, please call for the vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Councilmember Liu has abstained and recused herself. Councilmember Tai is absent, Mayor Pro Tem Tang?
Yes.
Mayor Liu?
Yes, motion passes, thank you so much. And I will, uh, ask Mayor, I mean, Councilmember Lo to come back.
So at this point, Ca, Mayor Liu left the room because he lives in the next district. And again, it's a smaller district and he was elected at large as well. And so not twenty-five percent of all city properties are going to be affected. So he will have to recuse himself from the next item as well.
Okay, so move on to item six point three. In this time, I'd like to recuse myself because I live in the district and I will now hand the gavel over to Mayor Pro Tem Ten.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's proceed to next item, six point two. Six point three, sorry.
Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council, again, our management analyst Nick Delgado will make the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council. This presentation is regarding a resolution levying assessments on Landscape Assessment District Number Forty-One Twenty-Two for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four twenty-five. District Forty-One Twenty-Two is geographically located in southwest Diamond Bar. It is south of Pathfinder Road, east of the fifty-seven freeway and adjacent to unincorporated Roland Heights. The district includes landscape maintenance with slopes and brush areas. There are estimated to be five hundred and fifty-four, uh, assessable parcels within this district. The assessments amounts are based on, um, the property type. And the assessment for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four twenty-five for single-family parcels is five hundred and forty-three dollars ninety-three cents. The assessment for condominium properties is five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and two cents. And the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four twenty-five financial summary is as follows. The total revenue for the, the district is three hundred and twenty-three thousand three hundred and one dollars. The total assessment revenue is three hundred and eleven thousand three hundred and forty-six dollars. The city's general fund contribution is eleven thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. And separately, the capital reserve fund balance is one hundred and fifty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars. The recommendation to the city council is to receive this presentation, open the public hearing to receive testimony, close the public hearing and adopt Resolution Number twenty-twenty-four thirty-one to levy and collect assessments for Landscape Assessment District Number Forty-One Twenty-Two for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four twenty-five. And I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
So now we open the public hearing. Are there any public comments on these items?
There's no one at the line at this time and there was no email submitted for this item.
So we're, we're going to close the public hearing. So are there any council ma, council members who want to comment or want to make a discussion?
Uh, no question from me, I'll move for approval on six point three to adopt Resolution Number twenty-twenty-four thirty-one.
I actually have a question, if you don't mind. Thank you. Uh, my question is with regard to the capital reserve of one hundred fifty-seven thousand one eighty-five. What do we foresee as, how that capital reserve will be spent? And how much do we think we need to accumulate in the, uh, in this capital reserve fund?
Thank you, council member. Eventually, um, the Public Works Department will start with the planning phase. And so this is not a large district, but the planning requires consulting with a landscape architect. Because most of these slopes are, have existing landscape that has existed prior to the city's incorporation. And so to change the landscape palette, for example, with drought tolerant landscaping, not only requires figuring out a landscape palette that's compatible with the area, but also upgrading the irrigation system, which requires plumbing and electrical work. The Public Works Department needs to figure out again, when, um, there's adequate funding for design costs, not only design, but also for construction. And Landscape District Number Forty-One Twenty-Two, um, does not have a dedicated capital reserve fund balance every year. This is only unspent funds that are, um, carried over. And so this balance of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars is only enough to, for the next fiscal year, for example, to consider a design, a, a very conceptual design, but considering the rate of how expensive construction is, there is no, uh, at this moment, there is no plan to do any construction in the sense of landscaping improvements in this district at this time.
Is this amount, uh, was it carried over from one year or was it for more than one year?
It, it will be carried over since the conception of District Forty-One Twenty-Two.
So what, that's, uh, two years now? So it's been two years, it's been, it's been building for the last two years?
Yes, council member.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Uh, I have an additional question. So, um, item six point one is about District Thirty-Eight, which is the to, the whole city. Now, these item six point two and six point three are smaller district in our city. So now the assessment will be adding together, right? The, the, the total city's fifteen dollars assessment plus each district's individual assessment, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, so residents that live within these particular districts, for example, residents that reside within District Forty-One Twenty-Two or separately, if a resident resides within District Thirty-Nine Twenty-Two, for, for starters, they will be assessed the fifteen dollar citywide assessment. Now, again, if they also have a parcel that is, uh, within those separate districts as well, they will be assessed these special district assessment as well. If a resident lives outside of these assessment districts, they are only charged to the citywide assessment only.
So my, uh, second question is, what about the other district? What they, uh, different assessment or what they've done before? Can you refer us about this? The other district besides District, uh, this two district?
Mayor Pro Tem, these are the only landscape assessment districts that the city has.
Okay.
So there's only three.
Only, okay, thank you. Now, uh, do we have a motion?
And I'll, okay, and I'll do a second, please.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Chow, we have second, from Councilmember Lo. City Clerk Sedena, please take the vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmember Chow?
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tai is absent, Mayor Pro Tem Tang?
Yes.
And Mayor Liu has abstained and recused himself.
So pass the motion, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, thank you, council. And we'll move on to item seven point one for council consideration. Uh, City Manager Fox, please provide the report.
Mayor and Council, our Parks and Recreation Director Ryan Wright will be making the staff presentation.
Thank you, City Manager Fox, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. It's my pleasure to present item seven point one. As we all know, the parks in the city play a vital role. They are some of the best amenities that are enjoyed by those of all ages. And while many folks enjoy our parks, visitors can still face health risks due to secondhand smoke in our parks. The CDC actually estimates that secondhand smoke is still responsible for about forty-one thousand deaths among non-smokers each year. While California state law prohibits smoking within twenty-five feet of playgrounds or a tot lot, which is like a sandbox area, as well as twenty feet from public building doors, it's still the city's responsible to enact further restrictions or to ban smoking if they choose. To date, over four hundred California jurisdictions have adopted additional laws to further restrict smoking. Therefore, it's staff's recommendation that in order to better align with Diamond Bar strategic goal of ensuring a safe, sustainable and healthy community, as well as following the Healthy Diamond Bar Initiative, it is the recommendation again to amend the municipal code in order to prohibit smoking in parks. This ordinance would not allow smoking in parks, a fifty-foot perimeter around the parks, and that includes a and that includes a parking, the parking lot. Uh, the Diamond Bar Center is excluded from this proposed ordinance, uh, due to the use for private events, uh, throughout the year. But again, the Ca- California state law does require that smoking is beyond twenty feet from those entryway doors. Although staff views this as a public health initiative and really an educational tool, if needed, this ordinance could be enforced by the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, um, as an infraction. Um, again, the goal though is to educate and inform the community that Diamond Bar is a safe place, including our parks. Um, if there was an infraction that the Sheriff's Department, um, found in a violation of the ordinance, it would be a hundred dollar fine for the first violation. But again, we don't believe the penalties would be common. But the goal again of the ordinance is to reassure residents that this is a safe, safe place and healthy place for, uh, youth, adults, and the seniors of our community. Um, so therefore, it's recommended that the City Council approve the introduction of the ordinance to read by title only and waive future reading of the ordinance. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Director Wright. And we will now open to open the public comments. Is there any, uh, public comments on this item? City Clerk Santana, or is there any, uh, one online?
There's no one online and no public comment emails were received.
Thank you, Ms. Santana. We will now close public comment on it, on this item. And I'd like to turn to my colleagues. Is there any comments or for discussion?
Go ahead.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Ten.
I I I think it's a good idea to have a, uh, smoking-free environment. But you know, uh, you mentioned that, uh, we're going to allow, um, Diamond Bar Center, uh, to to be a place with, uh, allow the smoking because they have a private event. But other, um, parks also have a, a function for private events. So would that cause any people's a challenge if, uh, you how can you, you, you let this place with a private event to allow smoking, but not the other places? Would that be an issue?
Thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tem. Staff's belief is that the Diamond Bar Center and its location is separate from a park. For example, Summit Ridge Park, which is just down below, um, would ban smoking. For example, if you were to rent a picnic pavilion, picnic pavilion at, say, Sycamore Park, smoking could have an impact to the tot lots and areas around there. So it is our belief that the Diamond Bar Center is a unique situation and the location sets aside from, um, impacting others that may, uh, be around the cigarette smoke.
Yeah, and and we don't think that, you know, there is a, I mean, we think that there's a reasonable basis for making the exception and so we don't think that it's a challengeable from a legal perspective. And it doesn't mean also that anyone can smoke within the Diamond Bar Center or, uh, you know, surrounding. Uh, staff will still have to designate smoking areas in that area and within the center property for smoking because you, there, the City of California still does not allow smoking indoors where there may be employees. So if our staff is working in inside, indoors, there cannot be any smoke in there. And also within twenty feet of the entrances and exits, there cannot be any smoking. So we'll have to designate a smoking area within the Diamond's, Diamond Bar Center. With respect to parks, there will be no smoking areas. You will have to go to the public right away somewhere to smoke or your house.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Liu?
Okay, thank you. So just to clarify then, if, uh, there's no smoking inside the community room at Heritage Park or Pantera Park?
There's no smoking anywhere in those parks.
Any, right, not indoors nor, nor.
Nor outdoors.
Nor outdoors.
Within the park perimeter, correct.
Right, right, not in the bathroom.
Correct.
Okay, so my question is this, um, you, the, um, the report says the enforcement is through, um, L E S D perimeter, uh, L E S D personnel, but these are infractions.
Yes.
I know that infraction, i- if it's a misdemeanor, it has to be committed in the presence of the officer. So, so if somebody's gonna smoke, no officer is really gonna be there. It has to be reported and by the time the report comes, the individual probably finished smoking. So conceivably, it's, uh, can never be enforced, seems to me.
Well, I mean, I I think that to the extent that there are individuals smoking, uh, my, then normally the way we enforce our code is we will ask the individuals to stop smoking. And if they continue smoking, then I'm sure our staff will call the sheriff and the sheriff will be able to issue citation. Now, as you know, infractions are not, there's no jail time. It's only a fine and under our code, the, for the first violation is a hundred dollar fine. For a second violation within twelve-month period is two hundred dollar fine. And the third violation and subsequent within a twelve-month period is five hundred, five hundred dollar fine. And so given that it's only a monetary fine, same similar to a vehicle code moving violation, uh, yes, you have to go before a judge, but you don't get arrested per se. You know, you sign a ticket basically, a notice to appear. Um, and, uh, normally, yes, you, you do commit, you have, you do have to commit the violation in front of the, uh, officer, but then there's also availability from, uh, using witnesses and citizens arrest in order for the citation to be issued.
Is, um, the way that it's written, is citizens arrest, um, uh, permissible? Is that part of the ordinance or do you have to, uh, write it separately?
Yeah, so we have a separate provision. When you look at the ordinance, it actually cites to Title One, Chapter Four of the Municipal Code. And, uh, and that in itself also refers to the Government Code for Enforcements of Local Ordinances by Cities. And we would comply with those requirements in order to, um, be able to issue the citations.
What would it take, for example, to have our volunteer, uh, uh, community patrol be part of the effort to, um, to curb the, the, the?
They would have to be trained under the Penal Code, I believe, is Section One Thirty-Six in order, because each of the citation is considered an arrest.
I see, okay, alright.
And so they would have to be trained and they don't need to go to post, but they still need to have some training. Uh, as you understand, there is due process, you know, some of the training involve, you know, uh, the Fourth Amendment and the Sixth Amendment. And have some certification to be able to, um, you know, enforce an arrest. Uh, because if you refuse to sign the citation, then you can be taken to jail to appear before a magistrate.
Got it, okay, great, thank you so much.
Alright, thank you, Councilmember Liu. Thank you, staff, that was a good public health initiative. Any other questions, discussion? Okay. Uh, but, uh, my colleagues like to make a motion on this item.
I'll make an abortion to approve.
Okay, the motion from?
Ordinance, uh, zero four, two zero two four, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Diamond Bar, California, adding Section One Two, twelve point zero zero point four seven zero.
Do I need to read the whole?
Uh, okay, that's what I was adding, Section Twelve Point Zero Zero Point Four Seven Zero. Smoking prohibited in city parks to Division Two. Park Rules and Regulations of Chapter Twelve Point Zero Zero. Parks and Recreation of Title Twelve. Streets, sidewalks, and public property of the Diamond Bar City Code to prohibit smoking in city parks.
Thank you, Councilmember Liu. So we have a motion from Councilmember Liu and then a second from Councilmember Chow. And City Clerk Santana, please call for a vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Councilmember Liu?
Yes.
Councilmember Tai is absent. Mayor Pro Tem Tang?
Yes.
Mayor Liu?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you so much. And we'll move to item, um, seven point two. City Manager Fox, please provide the report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, this item is a update to the travel expense and reimbursement policy. Um, that was last revised in October of two thousand and fourteen. Uh, it's a complete reformatting and new number schemes based upon our latest, uh, policy template. Um, it includes updated language throughout, mostly non-substitute changes. Um, the policy is applicable to council members and commissioners and, and city staff. The policy also provides compliance with the Government Code. Sections related to, uh, excuse me, council reimbursement on expenses related to city business. Uh, it's intended to replace your current policy F-five and rescind the previous resolution that adopted that, um, back in two thousand and fourteen. Uh, the policy was reviewed by the Council's, uh, review, uh, Policy Review Subcommittee, which includes Mayor Pro Tem Tang and Councilmember Chow, uh, and they recommended approval. Um, the most notable change in the policy is related to the, uh, per diem meal, um, limits. Uh, those have been combined into just one lump sum on a per diem basis and the amount would be seventy-five dollars per day. Uh, this provides a little bit more flexibility, um, as, uh, you know, prices at restaurants, uh, when we're traveling have, um, uh, when you consider, uh, tax and tip. Also, um, related to the policy is, um, reference to a council, the council's technology stipend. Uh, this is something that the council has received, um, on a long-term basis. Uh, the current amount is forty-three dollars and twenty-five cents for a technology stipend, uh, which, uh, would re theoretically reimburse for cell phones, other technology devices, and in, and, uh, expenses that the council may incur. Um, the, the amount is proposed to be increased to fifty dollars per month to provide consistency with other designated staff. Uh, the other changes are highlighted in the staff report and I'd be happy to go through those in more detail. Uh, the recommendation before you this evening is to adopt a resolution to approve, uh, the po- the, the policy revisions and a resolution to amend the benefit schedule, uh, that references the City Council Technology Stipend. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, I'd like to open up to, thank you, uh, Mr. Fox. And I'd like to open up to, uh, public comments. And I was seeing none in, in person. Um, City Clerk Santana, are there any public comments online?
There is no one online and there were no public comment emails received.
Thank you so much, Ms. Santana. Now, I will close public comment and open up the discussion for our council members. Like, any colleagues like to discussion, comment, none?
Well, I'll just say thank you to Mayor Pro Tem and, and Councilmember Chow for working on this policy. You guys did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Can I, do we have a motion on this item?
I'll move for approval to adopt Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-Four Thirty-Two and also adopt Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-Four Thirty-Three.
I'll second.
Alright, so we have a motion from Councilmember Chow and then a second from Councilmember Liu. Uh, City Clerk Santana, please call for the vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Councilmember Liu?
Yes.
Councilmember Tai is absent. Mayor Pro Tem Tang?
Yes.
Mayor Liu?
Yes, uh, motion passes. Thank you so much. Now, that brings us to the City Count, uh, the Council Subcommittee Reports and Comments. And we will start with Councilmember Chow.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Just a quick report from attending the State Board, um, Board Director Meeting with the CalCities. Uh, that's a board meeting where we adopted resolutions to either support or oppose a number of pop, uh, propositions that's gonna appear in November. So I'll just go down real quick, there are four, so it's not long. So the first one, it's a, the big one, I guess, Prop Thirty-Six, which is the, the one that allows felony charges and increases sentencing for certain drug and theft crimes. That one was passed, uh, to support. And we also have Prop Thirty-Three, which expands local government's authority to enact rent control on residential properties. That one was somewhat com- um, controversial and actually, um, couldn't reach the threshold that was required to make a position either way, which is, uh, two-third. Uh, so that one passed the committee without any action, uh, the board without any action. Uh, next is Prop Five, which is the Local Government Financing Affordable Housing and Public Infrastructure Bill. That one was a support. And last one, Prop Four, which is the Sa- Safe Drinking Water Wildlife Prevention, Drop Prepar- Drop Prepareness and Clean Air Bond Act. That one had a support position from the League. And that concludes my support, uh, my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Chow. And to Councilmember Liu.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Uh, first of all, I just want to congratulate the young ladies that were here this morning, the AYSOG's Ten Team. Uh, really is great to see the, um, um, our young people using our fields. It just makes all the work worthwhile to know that our fields are being well-used. So that's really great. Um, I wanted to also congratulate our recreation staff because of, um, the recreation program that, that you put together. Believe it or not, I actually signed up for pickleball this last, um, this last, uh, this last, what, six weeks or eight weeks? And, uh, it was a really, really enjoyable program. I'm still terrible at it, but it was a lot of fun. So I, I'm really glad that we offer those, uh, kinds of recreation to, uh, to our, to residents in our city. So thank you for that. And Nick Delgado, I think this is your first time doing a presentation. You did a great job. Thank you for your hard work and, uh, keep it up. And finally, um, this is vacation month. I just want to let everybody know that one of the services that we offer is, uh, vacation checks. And it's through our, uh, law enforcement team. So if you're going on vacation and it's just really nice to have our lawn, our volunteer patrol swing by your house, our sheriff swing by your house just to check it out, make sure everything's okay. And you can get that service, it's free of charge. Um, I believe you go through the L E S D website and through the, uh, the Walnut Diamond Bar Sheriff's Substation. And then there's a page that, uh, that you can sign up. So it's really a great service and I, and I hope that everyone will take advantage of that. And, uh, thank you very much. And I just want to invite everyone to Concerts in the Park tomorrow and every Wednesday. Lots of fun, thank you and see you there. Good night.
Thank you, Councilmember Liu. And Mayor Pro Tem Ten?
I have no report.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, um, well, first I, I'd like to wish, uh, believe it, a happy birthday to our council member, Andrew Chow. I'd like to thank our, our staff for the report and especially, uh, Mr. Delgado for, for the, um, for your welcome. And, and our, um, congratulations once again to the, uh, the All-Star, uh, G-ten, G-ten ISO All-Stars. And then speaking of parks and recreation, it is being, our parks are definitely, uh, being, um, with a good use. You know, normally I go to, uh, play, um, basketball by myself and I've been trying to go out there a couple of times and they were full. And kids are out there, out of school and then really using our parks, that, that, which is really, really great. Um, and, and in the summer, it's very, very hot. Um, please check up on each other and, um, bring, drink plenty of liquid to hydrate yourself. And as we are driving around our neighborhoods and we see a lot of road construction, and I want to give a shout out to all residents and thank you for your patience. And it, 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 at times, it could seem quite a bit inconvenient, but pretty soon we'll have, uh, new pavings and slurry seals and, uh, get all that done hopefully before the, uh, New Year. And I'd like to thank our Public Works for getting that done. And it's almost every different part of the city. It is quite amazing. And then they're doing different segments of it. And so no one is really blocked off from the other houses and homes. So thank you so much and we look forward to seeing everyone at Concerts in the Park and, uh, moving on to SARS tomorrow. For that, so I think, uh, say goodnight and we will, uh, kind, adjourn this meeting at seven thirty-six P M. Thank you so much and goodnight.